To the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, June 26, 2017. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. This will be getting pretty close to the last time we're going to be using that Boys Choir version of the Boys Choir. We have a new recording of "Oh, Canada" coming from a member of the Boys Choir, so stay tuned for all those "Oh, Canada" lovers, which I know there's many in the audience, obviously, and in the crowd today. We'll move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes, the minutes from June 12th. Can I have a motion to adopt those minutes? Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor. Given our move that council adopt the minutes during the meeting held Monday, June 12, 2017, and approve them.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct before we adopt that set of minutes? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote to adopt those minutes. Thank you. That motion carries, and we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda. Councillor Rice?
I move adoption of the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is-- Students for their submissions, looking at local government, and encourage everybody to come out and join us this Wednesday at Municipal Government Day. Thanks very much. Thanks, Councillor Tool. So we do have some other delegations that let us know that they were going to attend today. Next is Mr. Mitch Cunningham with respect to downtown beautification and transit in the city. Is Mr. Cunningham here? I don't see Mr. Cunningham coming forward, and so we'll move down in our agenda. We had Mr. Brian Tipper with respect to opening a medical cannabis dispensary in Grand Prairie. It's Mr. Tipper here. Welcome. Although I guess I kind of handle it for you. If you'd introduce yourself, and welcome.
Am I sitting?
Absolutely, sure.
Not used to that. My name is Brian Tipper. Been in Grand Prairie for six years now. Spent the better part of 27, 28 years in oil and gas. Pretty much went from running the shovel on pipeline as a 17-year-old and finished up as a business, global business development manager for Shawcor Oil Field Asset Management. This last downturn basically made me realize that, you know, over the past few downturns, I'm--I don't want to say I'm giving up, but I'm getting out, and I'm going to find different avenues and a new path. So cannabis distillery is something that I'm looking at right now, and just want to know some zoning and whatnot and see what we can do to get it going.
Sure. Well, so the--appreciate you coming tonight and making use of this opportunity. The best direction that we can give you is--would be first off, talk to our planning and development department. We have representatives over there, and I see Mr. Wright and Mr. Akbari. Either one of them would be appropriate to sort of make a connection with. This is an issue that is coming fast and furious to municipalities across Canada, and local governments are trying to figure out sort of the context of how this will be regulated. And I think our planning and development folks would be the ones to be able to give you the latest information, because it is a changing landscape, especially since the province of Alberta, who will be in charge of making determinations about how the retail sale will happen in our province, haven't actually issued those rules yet. But to keep up to date with the latest happenings of the city of Grand Prairie and the planning and development perspective would be our planning and development department.
Okay. I just, out of curiosity, I thought the rules went from federal to provincial, and then provincials handed them down to municipal to make those decisions.
No. So my understanding is that the federal government has decided to essentially decriminalize recreational use or non-medical use of cannabis or marijuana, and they will allow it sale. They're going to handle the regulation of the growing and of the, I guess, distribution. They've given the decision about retail sales, age of consumption, and a number of other things to the provinces. As municipalities, we're still waiting to understand how we'll be impacted and to what extent we'll be able to regulate the physical location. But it's likely that the only area that we would have any influence is on the physical where things locate, and we don't know yet to what extent we'll have any influence on that.
Okay, well, that's what I'm looking for. That's my first step into this. Been researching it since 2015, when the idea came about from Trudeau, so yeah, we'll see what happens. I'd also like to look at community safety with this, as far as storefront vape lounge for public safety reasons. You know, there's going to be--we all know there's homeless people and there's people running around downtown. They're going to have their hands on this stuff. They're going to be, you know, they're going to be on the corners. They're going to be smoking it. They'll have the attitude, it's legal. It'd be nice to have a place you could--that they'll come to, do whatever they got to do. It'll be very regulated, security, whole nine yards. But we're looking at making a big impact in the north. It would bring tons of employment, lots of opportunity, great dollars for the community, for the schools, roads, you name it. It's an endless deal. It's an open book. Want to work with the city, with the law, you know, with the doctors. Want everybody on the same page, and just bring the safety aspect. That's first and foremost to me, it's safety. I've been--it's been safety all through my career, and that's something I take very serious. So we want to do that, and we want to see how it goes and support the north, Grand Prairie. It starts with the distribution, because we want to be able to make it, so we need to--we're waiting for that way to have it transported. How are we going to transport it? Because as of yet, there's no grow dispensary in the county. But so once things get rolling and the dispensaries making the product, distributing the product, health and wellness, all that good stuff, then we can look at setting up our own, say, like the International Airport in Edmonton. We can look at setting one up in the north. Totally, you know, self-sufficient. We're all supplying everything from here, from the north, have good control over it, and we could keep a cap on it, really keep it tight in the community.
Well, certainly appreciate the intent, but as I--and as I say, I think there are a number of decisions that are yet to be made by the federal and provincial governments that ultimately that local governments, like the city or the county, will end up reacting to. City Council is in the middle of developing a position on some of these different things. And as I said, the best department to connect with would be Mr. Wright. I see he's got his business card there. He's sort of flashing and saying, "Yeah, you bet, I'm ready."
No, I'm going to go see him.
Okay. Excellent. I don't know if there are any questions for the delegation. We usually offer council an opportunity for any questions for delegations, but at this point, it sounds like Mr. Tipper was looking to make an initial connection. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. And just after what the mayor said, that we're not--we're open to how it's going to come about in laws, but I do know if you look into the city of Vancouver, even before the province made the law, they made municipal laws within the city's boundaries themselves for dispensing marijuana. So I think the rules are already going in different areas and provinces, so that's probably the right avenue to go now, but it depends how municipalities go about it in the near future here.
Thanks, Councillor McLean. I don't see anybody else in the queue with any questions, Mr. Tipper. So Stuart is right over there. He's got his business card. That'd be the first place to make a connection, and that way the city can keep you up to date with respect to the--our most recent position that we take, how we respond to the provincial and federal legislative changes that come, and how that might impact retail sales in Grand Prairie and physical locations.
Excellent.
Thanks very much for coming today and being out front to make a connection. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you all.
Thank you. So this--that's the end of the delegation. I'll just check to see, was Mr. Cunningham in attendance? Okay, so it doesn't look like he was here. I was made aware by administration that there were a number of parties with respect to one of the items on our agenda, item 9.11, the RFP for the former York Hotel and Jermaine Park sites. Later on in our agenda, we won't have an opportunity to ask any questions of the delegation, and so if the delegation wanted to make a bit of a presentation to introduce their concept and make themselves available to council to answer any questions, now would probably be the most appropriate time to do that. Welcome, gentlemen. If you just care to introduce yourself, yourselves, and yeah, I appreciate you making yourself available so that council has this opportunity to have a bit of a dialogue in case there are any questions, because later on our agenda, as I said, we wouldn't have that opportunity. Welcome.
Thanks for having us. My name is Travis Miller. I'm with Turcon Construction. We were in the Community Growth Council Meeting a few weeks ago, and I got to meet a few of the council members. We're here to represent Aladipo Maxwell and Professional Corp and Associates, our RFP for the York and Jermaine Park sites. Today, Hadar and myself representing Dr. Maxwell, who regrettably couldn't make it this evening, as he is a doctor and a practicing physician. He got called in. He did ask us to speak on his behalf, answer any questions, and then as well, read a statement that he had prepared when he couldn't make it. So that's kind of our agenda for this evening. So the statement from Dr. Maxwell.
Sorry, I'll just interrupt, just so if you can also introduce yourself.
I'm Hadar with--from Design Works Engineering, and together with Turcon, I'm one of the team leads on the project.
Thanks, Hadar. If you could just give us your last name as well, just--
Hadar Aldehan.
Thanks, sir. Thanks very much. Sorry, gentlemen.
Right, yeah. You prepare and prepare, and then you go off script, so. So from Dr. Maxwell, he goes, "I am sorry I could not attend the city council meeting this evening. I am grateful for the Community Growth Committee voted in support of our RFP, hence our discussion this evening. Grand Prairie has been the home to me and my family for the last three years. My wife and I offer professional services in the medical field while also investing in real estate in the Grand Prairie area. We have already shown our confidence in the downtown core by completing our 24-unit complex that tour my apartments just south of our location this evening. As we've already invested in the downtown core, our goal is to enhance that investment by partnering with the city of Grand Prairie to develop these plots of land in the lower part of the downtown core. As you are already aware, our plan consists of three mixed-use buildings that will create a vibrant downtown and improve the quality of life for all in Grand Prairie. We appreciate your support. Many thanks, Aladipo Maxwell." So at this point, Hadar, I'll give a quick design briefing of the buildings, and then we can answer any questions that you may have.
I don't know if you've all seen the concept or renderings of the project. It was in the media for a little bit of Facebook and whatnot. So the project is comprised of three buildings, so there's two buildings on 101 Ave and one building, which is the Jermaine Park site on 100 Ave. I'll start with 100 Ave building. So that one has got commercial on the main floor, and it's got a restaurant on the second floor. At Restaurant, we--I find in Grand Prairie, we don't have a lot of rooftop patios. If any, I think there's only one that's coming up right now, which we've been working on, is Jeffries. But what we've done is we've provided space for another rooftop patio/restaurant to come up, and then above it is 12 units. The other two buildings are strictly commercial on the main floor and multifamily on the second floor. Those two buildings will have 24 units each for residential and six stories commercial-- sorry, six units for commercial. So when we designed this project, we looked at the bigger cities, obviously, and we wanted to find what's the easiest for these guys that are staying in these apartments. So nowadays, everyone wants the easy life, so you can have a coffee shop there in one of the buildings, and the tenants of the second floor, third floor can come down, have a coffee, meet with friends, and do what they need to do. You can have a pharmacy, grocery store, convenience store, whatever you will. So we've designed it with a modern look, and yeah. It's got 24,000 square feet of commercial retail space in total. Building one and two have 6,700 square foot footprint with a total of 26,800 square feet of space. And Building Three is a larger building with an 8,400 square feet footprint with a total area of 28,560 square feet. Now, the way we've designed it, it's all condos. It's not low-income housing, so we've designed it in a way that people can go purchase whatever-- purchase condos, purchase units there. The benefit of it is there's people that are spending money in the downtown and that want to live in the downtown, they're going there. That's what we took into consideration when we did the design.
Thanks very much, gentlemen. So there may be some questions, and this will be an opportunity, so I see first Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions about the overall parking. How many units in total for the three buildings? 60-some for dwellings?
Yeah, currently, as it stands, we have 64 stalls kind of allocated for that. But again, I think the--because we're still in the design phase, like we're very, very early in the design phase, that it would be something that we'd be having a conversation with not only the development, but also the permitting and everything prior to us making that final decision as to how many. In addition, we are exploring options for the third building that we're going to be completing and doing underground parking specifically when that building comes around. Hopefully, that time, the economy comes around a little bit as well, which would make it more economically feasible to do something like that, to increase the amount of parking that we can have in that downtown area, specific to that project and those buildings.
So finish up with two more questions. You said 64 units. How many parking stalls?
64 parking stalls.
64 parking stalls. What's the going rate usually? Is it 1.5 parking stalls per dwelling when you do in different areas?
In different areas, correct. Not in the downtown core, though. There's none required in the downtown.
No, because they got rid of it, NASSIS got rid of it a year and a half ago. So overall, my final question is security parking. So if I was to buy a place down there, and I just parked my vehicle outside, I guess, is that what would happen?
Yep.
So security parking is not involved. It would be on the one building, but the other two building, if I pay so much per unit, I won't have security parking?
Correct.
Thank you.
Next, Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Thanks for being here today, guys. Just a quick question. So we've been trying to get rid of this land for a while. Now we're giving away for a pretty, pretty price. How soon do you guys, if this RFP goes through, how soon do you hit the ground running and break open the dirt and start building something there?
Initially, we were hoping for September. We've already been doing on the back end of things, some preemptive stuff, and we're looking at anywhere from three to six months, depending on when we can get financing, go through with the owner. Currently, as it stands, we're right on that precipice of starting all of the process that needs to happen. So between financing, design, permitting, and everything, we're anywhere from three to six months. Sooner the better.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Clayton?
I appreciate you coming tonight and explaining the project. I think you have great initiative in what you're doing. It's a good fit for the land, and I just had a couple of questions in regards to sort of a sales side of it. When will you take these units to market? And do you have a restaurant or a leasee already sort of lined up for the food outlet?
So hope is one year construction per building. So if we were to start in September, October, November, it'd be a year from that date. Sooner the better, again, to get those open. The owner himself is very anxious if everything goes through for him to begin and get going. He has another building that he is renting currently and is rented out just south of here that's completely filled already, so. In terms of the leasee of the restaurant, we haven't even approached that subject yet because we wanted to get over this hurdle first. I think before we--we didn't really want to even take it to the media or anything like that until we had passed this hurdle, at which point then we'll approach different people and go down that route. We do have a number of realtors who we've engaged and had that discussion with prematurely, and hopefully that'll lead to some things. We do have some leads, but again, we want to get past this before we start making promises and doing things of that nature.
Gentlemen, I had a couple of questions. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be here at the committee meeting. And so can you--are all three of the buildings served by one or multiple elevators? So I would imagine that at least one, but--
Each building has got its own separate elevator.
Its own separate elevator, okay. And can you speak to the size, what you're imagining at this stage, in terms of the size of the residential units, when--
They're varying. So right now, I believe we have them anywhere from 900 to 1,200 square feet. Again, I think we've kind of played around with a couple of different concepts, trying to maximize the space, but also to put in some more luxury units to kind of make things a little bit different. We're trying to, as a group, read what the market is looking for right now, and I think the market will change as the years go on. I mean, this could be, you know, an 18 to two-year project kind of thing. So the way that we look at it is, right now, as it stands, we're going to go mid to high range in terms of the apartments and condos that are going to go in, with the idea being that we would prefer to have more of the luxury side of things when Building Three does come around.
Okay. And what sort of sizes are you estimating for the commercial spaces?
They're all standing around 1,200 square feet, which is standard, and realtors find that the easiest to sell. And--but that's not limited, right? So there's six units, but if someone wanted to take two units and have their own store, they can do that.
Is it possible to go the other direction to see smaller square-footage units, just given the changing nature of retail and--
So if you have a copy of the prints in front of you, what you'll see is you'll see though they're elongated, so they're a little bit longer. And what that does, it allows it to have a front and back entrance, so should somebody want a smaller unit, you can actually split them in half and go from six to 12 as well.
So, okay. And then can you speak about the project's concepts' relationship to 101st Street? Grand Prairie tends to work on an east-west access most of the time, and I've always thought that this project gives us an opportunity to start to build a little bit more frontage on that 101st Street to draw residents off of 100th and continue them on up. So can you speak to how this project relates to that 101st Street side?
So I think at least our thought process has been with the improvements that the city is putting into the downtown area, we need a signature building to tie into. So we have the streets that are being completely redone, the area's being redone, and it's going to be a phenomenal space, but we lack that signature building in the area in order to grasp what we're trying to accomplish down in that area, and that's what we're trying to do with Building Number Two. So again, if you look at the building concepts, Building Two is right on the corner, and so that's going to be the big draw. And I think, you know, in discussion with the committee at the Community Growth Committee, we want to make sure that building is beautiful, very, very vibrant, and will draw people in off, like you said, off of 100th Street. By developing that building, I think it'll give some--dig some teeth into what we're trying to accomplish down there, and it'll bring in the right people, it'll bring in the right businesses, and it'll really, I think, complement what is already happening down in the downtown core. So that was why our goal is that building first, followed by Jermaine Park second, and then Building Three finally.
And so just to be clear, so the 101st side or the east side of that building that fronts onto it, or sorry, that's onto 101st, will the commercial units on that main floor have access points? Like, do you foresee them having access points onto 101st, sorry, 101st Street? Or does somebody actually have to go all the way around 101st Avenue to get into those?
You know, I think it'll be a combination of--sorry, I didn't mean to jump in on you, but I think it'll be a combination of the design process as well as what the tenants want. I think that has to be a big part of it as well, too, because if you have a tenant whose business model isn't one that allows for that access off that street, obviously we have to tend to that business. But for the most part, yes. I mean, the opportunities will be there to have access off of that street, and I think as well, too, they'll have secondary access off of the other street as well, too, because I think you have to have both opportunities. You know, businesses are handicapped by their access, and if we don't have enough access, then it'll be a major issue. So I think in conjunction, again, with our design and everything, and what, again, what tenants are going to go in there, will really dictate what we do in that regard.
I see Councillor McLean again.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just another quick question to finish up. So overall, if I'm coming to shop in here, I don't live there, because there's 64 stalls for people that live there, which would be like one per unit, and the average is 1.5, but there's no parking bylaw downtown. How many parking stalls for shoppers?
Yeah, it'll be open. I mean, right now, we haven't decided again what the plan is going to be for who the stalls are assigned to, whether they're going to be, you know, free-for-all, whether it's going to be designed to people who don't even have vehicles. One of the things we're noticing with Dr. Maxwell's other 24-unit apartment complex, again, just close to here, is that he has 13 parking spots for that unit right there with 24 units, and only eight are rented out, because a number of the people that have moved down there don't have vehicles and use public transportation, which I'm not saying will be this building or the clientele with this building. When it comes to shoppers, I mean, there's street parking, there is access, and then we're not, again, sure what we're going to do with the back stalls, whether they're going to be assigned or whether they're going to be a free-for-all during the day.
Great, thank you.
So can I just follow up on Dr. Maxwell's existing building and the results? Because this is an issue of discussion. It was a bit--it was an unusual change for us when we changed the land use bylaw. So you said that--so are those stalls being rented as an additional cost to their apartment rent?
In some cases, they are. Some cases, they're given away. So he did a joint with those when he first started the building. Some of them were given as incentive, and then other ones were given for, I believe, $50 a month for rental. And so he kind of tried it both ways and got results both ways, so.
But right now, of the 13 onsite stalls, there are eight that are--that nobody's using anyhow.
Sorry, there's eight that are rented, and there's five that aren't being used, and the building is completely rented out with two people on the waiting list, so.
And five units, five stalls, and nobody's bothering to use them. And can you speak to the, at this stage, what you imagine, what you're estimating the overall project cost to be, either by, you know, Unit One, Unit Two, Unit Three, or overall?
Well, right now, I mean, the estimates are around that $12 million range. I think it's going to vary depending on what we decide to do, so--and by we, I mean our whole group. At this stage, I think the goal of the first building is, A, to get the shovel in the dirt and start moving that building and getting it going forward, at which point we're going to be aiming towards that mid-range condos. So it's going to be not the super high end, but definitely not low income and low return. It's going to be that mid-range. As we progress, again, I think the trend is that we want to increase the value of those buildings. So Building Three, again, we've already had the preliminary discussions about doing underground parking, which, again, will bring up the cost of that building and the overall, I believe, rentability of that building as well, too. And so I think it's going to be completely dependent on the market at this stage, and again, I think it'll be part of our design process going forward, what we're considering. But as it stands, I would say mid-range is probably a good way to look at it, with the idea being that we want to get to that high range, because that's not in the area.
Sure. Sorry, just maybe I should clarify my question. So in terms of the construction value--
Right.
--of each unit, so you've got sort of three projects, let's say. So you're estimating approximately $12 million per building?
No, sorry. It's going to be roughly $4 to $5 million per building, as it currently stands, with, again, the whole being, I think, you know, granite countertops and more nicer type things in the third building, yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody with any questions. Gentlemen, thanks very much for being here tonight and answering some questions at this point in the agenda, when we can actually do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us.
Are there any other delegations who are here tonight to present to city council? I don't see anybody else coming forward, so we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda, and we'll move on into public hearings. And I would call to order the public hearing for Bylaw C-1212G Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan Amendment, Bylaw C-12812 Arbor Hills Two Outline Plan Amendment, and Bylaw C-1260-70 Land Use Bylaw Amendment. I'd call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This application involves amendments to the land use bylaw, the Arbor Hill Two Outline Plan, and the Arbor Hill ASP, which stands for Area Structure Plan. Administration received an application to a zone approximately 3.5 hectares located in the northwest section of the city. And as shown on the map here, the subject site is constituted out of these two areas, the two RM-zoned areas. The north parcel is, which is this one I'm trying to highlight, is almost 1.8 hectares, whereas the southern portion of the site is almost 1.6 hectares. The existing land use district is the RM land use, and it stands for medium density. The RM land use district is considered a multifamily land use district in the land use bylaw, and I'm--
with again, the whole being, I think, you know, granite countertops and more nicer type things in the, in the third building, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody with any questions. Gentlemen, thanks very much for being here tonight and answering some questions at this point in the agenda when we can actually do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us.
Are there any other delegations who are here tonight to present to City Council? I don't see anybody else coming forward, so we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda. And we'll move on into public hearings. And I would call to order the public hearing for bylaw C twelve twelve G Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan Amendment, bylaw C twelve eighty-one two Arbor Hills two outline plan amendment, and bylaw C twelve sixty dash seventy land use by law amendment. I'd call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This application involves amendments to the land use by law, the Arbor Hill two outline plan, and the Arbor Hill ASP, which stands for Area Structure Plan. Administration received an application to a zone approximately three point five hectares located in the northwest section of the city. And as shown on the map here, the subject site is constituted out of these two areas. The, the two RM zoned areas. The north parcel is, which is this one I'm trying to highlight, is almost one point eight hectares, whereas the southern portion of the site is almost one point six hectares. The existing land use district is the RM land use and it stands for medium density. The RM land use district is considered a multifamily land use district in the land use by law. And I'm go, I will go back to this at some point during the discussion. So as for the proposed application, the proposal is for zoning this section, which is the southern portion to RC, which stands for Combined Residential, and the northern portion to be a zone to RG, which stands for General Residential. The proposed RC land use district is considered in the city's land use by law a multifamily land use district, even though it allows for semi-detached dwellings. As for the RG land use district, it is considered a low-density zone and it allows for either single detached dwellings or semi-detached dwellings. The quarter section where the site is located is subject to the Arbor Hills two OP, which is contained in the, the Arbor Hill ASP. Therefore, amendments to the two aforementioned sites, which is the one I'm trying to highlight here, requires also amendments to the, to both plans, namely the OP and the ASP. As shown on the map, on respect to the OP, the two parcel constituting the subject site are designated multifamily in the OP. And as mentioned before, since the, one of the proposed land use district, which is RC, is considered a multifamily zone, then amendments to the OP for the southern portions are not acquired. They will be only acquired for this northern one because it is, the proposal is for a low density and what is shown in the OP is multifamily. As for the ASP, as shown here, one of the maps, which is map three, shows the whole site, which, which means the two parcels constituting the site as, as RM. Therefore, amendments will be acquired for this portion of the hillside ASP. It should be mentioned that other maps in the OB and the ASP are proposed to be revised to reflect the new changes and also the alignment for the future one thirty-fourth avenue. One thirty-fourth avenue will be somewhere close by here. Along the same line, the proposed land use by law amendment will require changes to some of the tables and the closets in the two plans, which are the OP and the ASP. As for the analysis, if this amendment is proposed, it's deemed, the result will be deemed to be compatible with the existing land use statistics because the existing land use statistics are mainly low-density and medium-density residential areas, as well as a small portion of a commercial area. And if we go back to one of the maps, this is a commercial area I was talking about. One point that should be mentioned here is that City Council adopted policy six seventeen in January of this year. It's about the reclassification of multifamily sites. According to policy six seventeen, any sites could be considered for reclassification if it meets the C D F on conditions. The same conditions are the site is unserviced and the zoning will not result in any issues in terms of land use. And also the site lends itself to a reasonable configuration. The subject site is deemed to meet the C criteria. Therefore, Administration recommends the approval of the proposed L U B, O B, and A S P amendment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much for the lead. Any questions for administration at this point? Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor, I got a couple of questions I'll read. In the whole site, I can't remember the numbers about small lots. And so I'm just going to look on this map. If you put the map up there, the orange, yellow, and green, and I guess the green is the parkway and the walkway. No, that one's, there's a different one there. Yeah, right there, that one. So the question I'm asking is some of the changes in the north and the south. So on the north here, you have multifamily where there are like thirty-foot wide lots with the back alley. I believe that's what that is. You want to change the north RG to the same way? Or what am I guessing on that one? So that's my first question. From RM to RG on the north, is it going to be like small lots, like the one above it?
So you, Mr. Mayor, so if I understood the question correctly, we are talking about this site, not the northern one. So this one, these ones will be RG, which will be bigger lots compared to the southern portion, which will be RC, which according to what we know so far from the applicant, and the applicant can give you more details, it's going to be more like semi-detached dwellings.
Okay.
So it'll be smaller lots.
Okay, so my final question, I think it's my final question here. If you go north, you have multi two point four hectares. Is that supposed to be apartment buildings or what's that area going to be for? Because we're changing this RM. And we always talked about some of the new ones, I'm just going to finish my up here. Some areas were built thirty feet behind houses for apartment buildings. And we're going to take this bottom south out where you got a park, you got a hundred thirty-second and commercial, and we're just going to build row housing. But is, isn't that a great spot to have apartment building? You don't have any regular houses right beside it. So is it, is that the one to the north on a hundred and eight, is that for apartment buildings? Or what's that one area going to be designated for?
So you, so you, Mr. Mayor, I can only speculate, I can only tell what the land use parlor allows based on what it allows. And if I'm, if I'm correct, you are talking about this spot here. It can allow for an apartment building. However, I believe the applicant would be in a better position to answer this question.
Okay, that's good.
Thanks, Council McLean. Any other questions for administration? I had one, Mr. Akbari. When you showed the Arbor Hills ASP, the map seems to be outdated in a couple of areas. It doesn't seem, doesn't reflect the RC that is in the Arbor Hills outline plan. And it also, to the east, doesn't reflect the Trader Ridge development. And so we're understanding that those aren't the sort of subject of this development or the Trader Ridge one certainly isn't. Will we be seeing more amendments to the Arbor Hills ASP coming forward in the future?
As you, Mr. Mayor, these what we call like housekeeping amendments are already included as part of this amendment, but only specifically speaking to the Arbor Hill. We did not touch upon the areas outside.
So any housekeeping issues in the Arbor Hills area will be dealt with in these proposed amendments? Any housekeeping issues that may arise outside of the Arbor Hills outline plan area would be addressed at some future date?
So you, Mr. Mayor, yes. For example, one example is, I know it's shown here, the CG land use district here. And some of the OPs, it was mentioned as CS, which is the old equivalent in our land use by law of the CG now. So this is being amended as part of this application to be more consistent.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other questions for administration, council. If not, then I would open the presentation submission portion of the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in attendance to speak to these proposed changes to the Arbor Hills area structure plan, the Arbor Hills two outline plan, and the land use by law amendment. Out in the darkness of the far reaches of the council chamber. Gentlemen, welcome. It's not your first time here, but if you'd care to introduce yourself, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Given, council. Scott Rossler with Helix Engineering. With me today is Scott Pravitz with Prudential Lands, representing the developer. Trying to get through a couple of the questions, well, I'll give you the background on the project first. I guess the, this was brought forward to us as a, as a response somewhat to the, the policy change on, on multifamily, but realistically more to do with the fact that there's, there's, just to reconfigure some commercial and things like that and take advantage of a, a nice natural feature that exists in, in the current Arbor Hills development. So there was a lot of iterations that went back and forth on this project. We spent probably more time than, than typical on coming up with a layout that worked between planning, administration, developer, and, and then the engineering side as well. So through that, this is the concept that has, has come forward. And realistically, this was, was a concept that was driven mostly by the multifamily on the west. So the, the, maybe I'll throw the camera up here and then we can. So mostly driven by, by this multifamily parcel, which is indicated in the zoning map would be zoned as RC. So opportunities there for row housing, semi-detached. We're looking at several alternatives right now, but that is definitely the driving force behind the amendment. So through that, the, the questions that were, that did get asked here today to Mr. McLean's questions on lot sizes, the majority of this plan is RG. So the, the RL zoning, which would be considered the small, well, against RAS now, would be considered the small lot zoning within the development, has not increased at all with, with this amendment. So the, the zoning map hasn't changed in that regard. So the, we've actually introduced larger lots. So the yellow lots that are identified within the, the rezoned area and amendment area will be zoned RG, which is a minimum forty-foot lot size. So that is the largest residence, single-family residential zoning that the city Grand Prairie has. So that's the, that's to do with the lot sizes. The RM site to the north, as discussed by Mr. Abakri, the, the north multifamily site being two point oh four hectares in size, hasn't really been considered yet. We're a long ways away from there with servicing. So the, you know, once we get, do get closer to that area, we would consider what, what the development will look like. So at this time, it remains a multifamily site and, and will until, until we reach that location with development and services. It is coming a little bit quicker. We ran water lines by there this year to service the Catholic High School in the west quarter, so. And as far as the, I think you're, you're correct, Mr. Given, that the, the maps are outdated. I believe the, there must, there must be an internal issue there. I think the, the actual area structure plans are current and they're accurate. So the Trader Ridge, we were part of that as well. So the Trader Ridge development definitely has the correct zoning and is not zoned UR anymore, as well as the RC within the development. So the, the plan for, for that multifamily site currently at this time is a semi-detached type of concept. So we're just working through that as we speak. And we do have a little more detail on this, but, but not something that will be presented in outline plan level. So I don't know if Mr. Pravitz has anything you want to add, and then we'll be open for questions.
No, we can, open for questions.
I see Council McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given, just a quick question. So the map that was up there is what it's going to look like in the finish, not what we got in here? Or the one that's showing there, that's the way it's going to look?
Both are included in our.
Okay, the other one?
Well, Council, may I go further down in our council package and the updated?
I'm looking at one here.
Plan is there.
Yeah, so now the question asked both he is, Scott and Scott, is, I see you're asking with row housing or something patch in the first, what you're trying to do. And I'm glad you said about the forty feet, even though I don't consider that a big lot, but it's better than thirty. Wouldn't you say this one area into the south would be ideal for like, if you were to do apartment building for a park, commercial, and a hundred thirty-second? Wouldn't that be like an ideal area for an apartment building or apartment buildings?
Typically, I mean, it's, it's all market-driven. So I mean, we've, we've, we've had these sites and there's, we also have that five and a half acre commercial, multifamily sites in the north. And then we have a four-acre site that's just across the street right here that we've had for six years and not a single person looking for that product. So it's, we're sitting on this, trying to figure out what we, what we can do with it. And then we have somebody approach us on this site. And I can tell you what we're, the idea is right now is that, that one point five seven hectare RC zone site is being proposed as like a seniors-type bungalows for your retired individuals coming out the farm. And they will, they will be dressed up. I think they're, they're going to be bungalows. We thought to have that kind of product at that location with, again, with, with amenities, with the park and the water and the walking trails, it was, seemed like a good idea. But yeah, again, it's just, it's market-driven, right?
Okay.
If we have somebody who wants to build an apartment there and comes to us, and it's great. But we just don't get that. It's hard to get those sites sold.
Council McLean?
Mayor Given, it's just that we had a few developments in our city where four-story apartment buildings or five or whatever they are, twenty feet back from people's backyard. So I just thought, wow, what an ideal area for an RM. And it seemed like the planning was really done in this new area. So that's why I was seeking and asking. Thank you.
Thanks, Council McLean. Gentlemen, I had a question just about the, given the depth, I guess, of the new RG lots. It looks like there's a fair bit of public roadway. So how will that be treated or is that going to be a really big, is it going to be a really big wide road? Is it going to end up with a pork chop in the middle? How will that be managed?
I'll draw you a picture. Basically, this becomes a, this becomes a one-way road within here. We're still working on a concept and engineering, so it's not detailed to, to the extent that we'd be able to present it. But for all intensive purposes, we wanted to keep, there was a bit of a conflict with residential lots across from commercial, being that we expect a fair amount of traffic on that road. So we wanted to keep the driveways off and, and, and any potential pedestrian conflicts and one another way. So what we did is we have a, this will actually be a single-direction roadway that'll run down here and tee into the, the road here. So what'll end up happening is we're going to end up with a little island in the middle. So it's, it'd be a, be a grassed area in the center and it'd be landscaped. We actually do have a concept, brought it tonight, but the, it's a fair amount of, of grassed area within there with a single-lane roadway. We're able to keep this fairly narrow, keep the traffic speeds down, make it a little more pedestrian-friendly and a little safer for vehicles backing out of the driveways.
Okay, good, thank you. I don't see anybody else in the queue with questions for the delegation? No, then gentlemen, thank you very much for being here this evening to present. Is there anyone else here who wish to present with respect to these associated amendments to the Arbor Hills area structure plan, the Arbor Hills outline plan, and the land use by law amendment? Is there anyone else here to speak to these proposed amendments? Okay, if there wasn't, one last opportunity for questions from council to administration before I close the public hearing. Any questions for administration, council? This will be your last opportunity. Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing. We move on to business arising. And I would look for our first tranche of motions. Council, if somebody steps up and takes that first set of motions, we can also look for a council member to do the, the next set because there's quite a list there. Counsel Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C dash twelve twelve dash G being an amendment to Arbor Hill's structure, Arbor Hills area structure plan.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. There's no discussion debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Counsel Thieson?
Thank you again. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C dash twelve twelve dash G.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Any discussion or debate on second reading of the Arbor Hills area structure plan amendment? See no one in the queue? I will call for the vote, please vote. That motion carries, Counsel Thieson?
I would move that council have third reading for bylaw C dash twelve twelve dash G at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. So this is a motion to have third and final reading here at our council meeting tonight. In order for this motion to pass, it must pass unanimously. If it does not pass unanimously, then we will have third and final reading at a subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? I don't see anybody in the queue, so I will call for the vote, please vote. Yeah, I think I'm looking for one more, thank you. That motion carries, we can have third reading, Counsel Thieson?
I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C dash twelve twelve dash G.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. One from last final opportunity for any discussion or debate on bylaw C twelve twelve G? Seeing none, I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you, that motion carries. Counsel Thieson, do you want to continue on or?
Yeah, I don't mind, it's fine. I've seen everybody else do it over four years. I can, I can carry this load. I've seen everybody else do it uh over four years, so I can, I can carry carry this load tonight. Um, so I would move that uh council give first reading to bylaw C dash twelve eighty one dash two, being an amendment to Arbor Hills two outline plan.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Some other discussion or debate on first reading, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Counsel Thieson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C dash twelve eighty one dash two.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Any discussion or debate on second reading of bylaw C twelve eighty one two, the Arbor Hills two outline plan amendments? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you, Counsel Thieson.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading for bylaw C dash twelve eighty one dash two at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Everybody heard my introduction last time, uh, save you all from hearing it again. Um, this is our motion that must be unanimous uh for us to carry on tonight. Is there any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Counsel Thieson.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that uh council give third reading to bylaw C dash twelve eighty one dash two, being an amendment to Arbor Hills two outline plan.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Any discussion or debate on Arbor Hills two uh amendments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. Thanks very much, thank you, Counsel Thieson. So we have one more set of land use by law amendments.
All right, I would uh, I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash seventy, being an amendment to the land use by law.
Yeah, thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Uh, no discussion or debate on first reading, please vote. Yep. That motion carries, Counsel Thieson.
Thanks again. I would move that uh council give second reading to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash seventy.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Any discussion or debate on these proposed land use by law amendments? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Counsel Thieson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would uh move that uh council have third reading for bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash seventy at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Any discussion or debate uh on this motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Counsel Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. So for my final motion on this order of business, I would uh move that council give third reading to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash seventy. Being an amendment to the land use by law.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Any discussion or debate? This is your last opportunity. Looks like nobody's going to take it. I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, thank you very much, thanks, Counsel Thieson. Um, that handles all of our public hearings for this evening. Uh, we have no items under unfinished business. Uh, we do have one item under reports, item eight point one, the Tri Municipal Industrial Partnership, and I'll look to our city manager for an introduction.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. It's uh with pleasure that I introduce the report on the Tri Municipal Industrial Partnership. As you're aware, this is a, an alliance of the City of Grand Prairie, the County of Grand Prairie, and the Municipal District of Greenview. Coming together in an attempt to put a framework in place that will allow us to attract a large uh scale industrial development into the area. Uh, the material that was included in your pack, package is relatively self explanatory. Uh, the work that the committee has done to this point has been successful in determining a um, a terms of reference for the group to move forward. It's developed a vision statement that allows them to see precisely what it is that we're trying to create in the alliance. And it's put a budget together that has resulted in an allocation between the partners. The recommendation you see before you, uh, Mr. Mayor, is the compilation of that information and a request for council to approve.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Nickley. Um, Counsel Clayton is the other member on that committee. Could you make a motion for us?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council authorize administration to make the city of Grand Prairie two thousand seventeen financial contribution of fifty two thousand five hundred dollars for the Tri Municipal Industrial Partnership and to approve the terms of reference and vision statement for the partnership as outlined in the set uh attached documents.
Thanks very much, Counsel Clayton. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I don't see anybody in the queue. I just would uh want to bring council's attention to the uh, uh, the vision statement. Um, that was, uh, so that did actually take a a couple of meetings to accomplish. Uh, as Mr. Nickley highlighted, uh, the intent of having that vision statement uh described as it is in the package, uh, which reads. Uh, Gold View, uh, Greenview's Gold Creek area is a world class development, home to well planned, value added industrial facilities that advance Alberta's economic success and increase the diversity of opportunity in the Grand Prairie region. Um, the intent was not just to come up with flowery language, but to ensure that at some level, all of the partners, the three municipalities, had a bit clearer idea of exactly what it is that we were going after. Um, it's uh clear that it is industrial facilities. Uh, these are not agricultural facilities uh that we're looking at. Um, and that a large part of the intent is both to have a measurable impact on the economic prosperity of the province, but also to increase the diversity of opportunities, uh, employment opportunities uh that are available in uh specifically in our region of the province. Uh, and so I just wanted to uh point council's attention to that because not everybody immediately jumps to vision statements. But I thought, uh, given the amount of work that the the uh committee put into it, I thought it was relevant. Uh, Counsel Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just have a couple of questions regarding the terms of reference, uh, particularly uh item number three, the prin- principles. Um, first off, on uh, right near the bottom of that page, that talks about uh costs. Um, that costs will be shared amongst the municipalities. And it talks about direct, direct investment, marketing and operations. Is that referring to any um hard uh capital costs that will be uh maybe required to be putting in?
Uh, I'll look to the city manager uh to speak to that if you wish.
Uh, through the chair, uh, no, there, there's no direct servicing costs that have been contemplated at this point. At some point in the future, the the group may elect to move in that direction. At this point, it's just startup costs and getting the uh, the personnel in place to get the organization started.
And to supplement the city manager's answer, I think, I think the intent behind uh, you know, three point one three uh was to ensure that there was flexibility. Should the group choose to go down a path where there were hard infrastructure costs that we had uh uh made that possible through the terms of reference. But as the city manager says, at this stage, that uh, it isn't clear that that's the intent.
Okay, uh, and then uh, the next point there, the uh revenue sharing. Uh, it does speak to, you know, for clarity and talks about linear assessment. Does the net revenue include machinery and equipment taxes as well as uh any well um taxes that are, would be applied in that area?
Mr. Management, do you have that level of detail?
I, I don't uh in detail, the, the, it's the property tax revenue that would be calculated from the development, less the direct costs associated with that. So until the developments are specifically identified, it's a little difficult to to be more detailed.
I just, I see since the uh linear assessments, you know, specifically identified there, I just wouldn't want that to exclude, you know, other.
Sure. I, it's, and again, uh, and this is something we can, Counsel Clayton and I can bring up if the more clarity is needed uh with the committee. Uh, I think the intent was to be uh broadly reflective of the, the, I think the intent is to recognize that the, there will be a direct sharing of property tax revenue. Um, M and E is very, is a type of property, obviously, um, but well drilling, uh, I don't believe we had. I, and I, in fact, I think at the committee we discussed it and that was something that would be excluded. Um, so uh that it is more on the property tax side, not the well drilling side. Uh, the question about whether M and E would fall in, uh, and if it does, why it's not enumerated like linear assessment is a reasonable one, we can follow up.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, uh, then I'll call for the vote on Counsel Clayton's motion, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, uh, Counsel Rice.
Just wanted to observe that this is indeed a historic um step forward that we just took. Uh, I always sometimes uh believe uh, listening to the media that the city, the county and the MD do not get along. And yet this is a, I believe, a huge advantage to the region uh and uh should be acknowledged as a tremendously historic step forward. So um kudos to the committee.
And certainly kudos to council for their commitment to the project. This is an all of council decision to enter the partnership with the MD and with the county. And so certainly appreciate the leadership of all the assembled council members, uh, um, you know, when we were proposed with the idea from, from the partners. Uh, so we'll go into committee business, uh, nine point one, the community growth committee meeting, and Counsel Clayton, I think that's your set of minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the community growth meeting held Tuesday, June thirteenth, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel Clayton. Uh, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions, Counsel McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I got a few things to speak to of it. I'm hoping council will vote no to this.
Great, Counsel McLean, we're talking about.
Vote the minutes, yeah, okay, good, I'm on the next one.
I, I hope council will vote for the minutes.
Or vote for the minutes.
Okay, okay, okay. Uh, any discussion or debate on the minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Counsel Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council award RFP twenty four dash one oh seven dash seventeen, the former York Hotel and Jermaine Park Land sale to uh Oladapo Maxwell and Associates in the amount of three thousand dollars exclusive of GST as the highest evaluated proponent meeting city specifications. Uh, and just speaking to the motion if I can, um, there was good discussion at the committee level. Um, there is possible concerns uh people may have on the price tag on this piece of land. And I want council to recognize that this uh in the highest evaluated proponent ticked all the boxes that council set out for this piece of land. It, it meets the goals and and over a very short period of time, we re- retain the tax revenue um on land that has sat empty for far too long. So I encourage council to support this, thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton, Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, got a quick question to administration, not sure about the numbers, so I'd like to ask them a question on this. About the value that when we bought the property, what we paid for it when the building was on it and what we paid to tear the building down? Taxpayers paid. That was a term before me, so I, you know, that's a few years ago, seven or eight, I think four on this council were there then, but the rest of us weren't.
Uh, I think somebody over there in administration may have that answer, Miss Lee.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, the land was originally purchased by the city for eight hundred thousand. And the city spent approximately three hundred thousand uh including all the environmental assessment monitoring to demolish the building.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll finish off, thank you, Mayor Given. Knowing that we're doing Revitalization Downtown, I think it's very important, but not at any cost. And a couple of reasons why I'm hoping the council will vote this down is a couple, I got five reasonings here. I, I, there's no parking for customers that are going to be using the retail, so where are they going to park? Number two, it's one stall per unit when average, anywhere else in the city, if it's an apartment building or units, are one point five per stall. Uh, for you, per unit. Uh, security parking, you imagine downtown, living there, no security with your vehicles parked outside. Anyways, think of it yourselves, it's all nice downtown, but some evenings it is not very nice. Uh, so that's sixty four stalls just for mostly for the people living there, not one point five. Uh, property being sold for three thousand dollars when it cost the city, well, I guess, one point one million. And uh, to say that's a good deal to sell for three thousand dollars, I'm not included. And this is leading to no parking, which I seen it coming. The city taxpayers, if we think we spend money now, wait till we have to build our parcade. Because this is where it's going to drive to, where the city has to pay for a parcade because buildings being built with not enough parking. I think it's a crappy deal and I hope council votes it down.
Thanks very much, Counsel McLean, Counsel Thieson.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'm a little concerned about the parking. I can uh, I can uh, I guess echo Counsel McLean's. I guess, uh, it's not too big of a deal because I've seen how other cities have dealt with it. You know, you can gate up the area, put up a little boulevard and then put like a nice metal cast iron fence that looks pretty and keeps everything secure. Put out cameras, video surveillance on site. I am concerned about the commercial aspect of that. My question is really in regards to the value of the land. Uh, do we have any, do we have any stipulations that uh, that let's say the market isn't good and building three can't go up? Um, if we let go of this land right now, can the, the owners of the land that we've turned it over through in this RFP, can they then just sit on that land and then sell it at a higher price than three thousand dollars? Miss Lee?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. Um, the RFP uh contract will ha- include uh a couple of of clauses for situations such as that, uh, the buyback clause. Which I turned by my notes. Uh, there is a buyback clause included so that if the proponent does not fulfill their obligations, the uh city can purchase the land back um for ninety five percent of the purchase price. Uh, additionally, there is a um, a one percent fee um calculated based on the total value um that the city will collect from the proponent that will be returned upon completion of the project.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, in knowing that, uh, I'm in full support of uh, of the project one hundred percent. Uh, and I think uh, Counsel McLean does bring up uh some good points on parking. And I know that administration will work with the developers uh to try to mitigate those concerns for any future council members who will be sitting on the next council as this development progresses. So with that, I'm, my vote is yes today and I hope encourage my other council mates to to vote accordingly.
Thanks, Counsel Thieson, Counselor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. You know, I, I will be, I'm in full support of this development. I uh think that we need to start losing this sort of small town mentality that uh, you know, requires this enormous parking lots and multiple parking. When you go to any, you know, major centers across Alberta, across Canada, you know, the parking ratios are much, much smaller than what's being proposed here. Uh, and so I think, and and here we have a case where it's a private developer willing to take the risk and willing to uh and make that investment with those number of parking stalls, with that retail. And I think that if a private developer is, you know, willing to to take that risk on, I, I don't know why the city would want to uh, to impede that uh progress. Um, in regards to the uh, you know, the, the cost to the city, we've had this land vacant for how many years? It's generated zero uh property tax dollars. Um, at full buildout, this proposal is going to generate about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year in property taxes, which will be, you know, in perpetuity for the, you know, lifespan of the building. Um, I think this is a win, win, win all the way around. Uh, I think it's a, you know, fantastic building, the architectural um designs so far have uh, are going to be a real asset to the downtown or really complement the work that we're doing downtown. And I think would be foolish to to vote against this proposal and uh just hope that it would spur uh further development, particularly on the other side of a hundredth would be great. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Tarrant. Uh, I don't see anybody else in the queue. Uh, I'll take an opportunity to say that I also support the recommendation. Um, I think ultimately the value uh to this land is not its cash value. It's in its ability to generate activity in our downtown core. Uh, it's in the land's ability to provide uh high density housing uh in the central part of our city, uh, which helps reduce sprawl. Uh, I think it helped, the value in the land is in this development demonstrating a confidence in our downtown, uh, which will encourage others to invest in the downtown. And uh, although it may be more difficult to measure, um, I think it's, I think it's probably reasonable to to assume or foresee that an investment like this will increase the value of all of the surrounding properties as well. Uh, certainly, uh, properties that are adjacent uh to the site now, um, uh, are not benefiting uh from the activity um and that that's happening there now. Uh, and so certainly I think that uh council needs to recognize that the value in this proposal is far beyond uh the uh simple sale value or the purchase price of the, the property. Um, and in fact, probably even beyond the uh value of the property taxes that will be generated as Counsel referen- uh, Counsel Tarrant referenced. Although those are important, uh, considering we'll have a payback uh on the investment the city has in this land in in roughly six or seven years. Um, I still think that that's the, those are the small potatoes. The big potatoes are uh demonstrating a commitment to the future of Grand Prairie and the fact that we are truly urban center with an urban heart, uh, where people live, work and play. And uh, and uh the ability to increase the activity on the street, which will support downtown businesses. Um, and I just, in with respect to uh parking stalls, I was uh really interested to hear the results of Dr. Maxwell's uh existing building. Um, I was surprised myself. I was certainly in support of, I, um, one of the initiators of the change to land use by law to not require or to allow parking standards to be driven by private investment decisions. Um, and I'm very surprised to hear that there are five stalls at a twenty four unit apartment building that aren't being used. I think it demonstrates that there are people in our community that are not as auto dependent as we think they are. And I, I think that's a very positive thing. And finally, and this might be a little bit further down the road, council uh has to think with a long term view. bit further down the road, council has to think with a long-term view, and, here's my, at risk of getting laughed out of the council chambers, automobile transport is changing. It is not unreasonable to assume that in fifteen years' time, or twenty years' time, or perhaps less, people will not rely on owning their own vehicle. They will rely on calling a vehicle and having it show up at their front doorstep, and they will essentially choose transportation as a service that they'll subscribe to. And, and the world of transportation is changing due to technology, and it's up to us to start to think about that and how it's going to impact our community. So for all those reasons, I'm in support of the, in support of the proposal. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Much of what I was going to say, my colleagues have covered. The only thing I wanted to add is, given the context of this location and the, and the years that it's sat, the way it is, I really support the city being a somewhat of a partner in this project. And that partnership is the three thousand dollars for the land for long-term gain. So I think there are times when the cities, to spur the development and to receive the ongoing tax benefit of it, this is something that I think is prudent to do. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Radburn. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I am fully supportive of this project going through, just for the reasons that were mentioned on the positive side. And I have been out of town a little bit here in the last little while. And in Ottawa, there, there's the Bywood Market area, there's got to be fifty restaurants in there, and I don't think there's fifty parking stalls in that whole area. So when you think of people walking to a restaurant, there's a prime example, and that's the cities, or the coun- nation's capital. Taxi cabs are being used quite a bit, rubebers being used, and people are riding their bikes and, and just walking. So I'm not trying to promote the change of the person's lifestyle here, but I think it will be changing without any of the city's input. The cost of automobile insurance and fuel, and, and even the cost of vehicles, I think you're right. I think individuals will be changing the way they deal with transportation modes in the future. So, thank you very much.
Thanks councillor O'Toole. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick question to administration. Will this same group be eligible for grants per unit above?
Miss Lee?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, the development is eligible for funding under the downtown incentives program.
So to finish up, how much are they, would be allowable, allocated per unit if they build this? And we know there were sixty-four units, so how much per unit would they get?
Fifteen thousand per unit.
Fifteen thousand times sixty-four?
For a total of nine hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Seeing nobody else in the queue, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Clayton, was there anything else you wanted to highlight from that set, from that meeting?
No, that's great. Thanks, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much councillor Clayton. We'll move on to the community living committee from June thirteenth. Councillor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will move the community living minutes of June thirteenth.
Thanks very much councillor Tarrant. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes that we need to address? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will ma- move that council name the Montrose Concourse, or what has been known as the Montrose Concourse, it doesn't officially have a name, name it Mamawee Concourse. And in speaking to this motion, there was a bit of dialogue at the committee meeting in regards to the naming of this site. We had asked administration to, to go and talk to our, our elders, local elders, to find out whether there was a name that we could still honor the, the native culture and heritage, while still having maybe a, an English context there to give people a little more clarity to as to what the site referred to. And they came back to us and, and said they were fine with adding the concourse at the end. They also proposed the shortening of the first part of the name from a longer version to Mamawee, which still means the gathering place in, or a gathering place, gathering place in Cree. And so with that, the committee is recommending that council name Montrose Concourse Mamawee Concourse.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Tarrant. Councillor Rice?
I suppose it might be too late now if you've done the negotiations, but I guess I would feel more comfortable if it was the Montrose Mamawee Concourse. Montrose is, of course, a name that is tremendously important in the history of Grand Prairie, and to remove that name from the concourse, that makes me somewhat uncomfortable. And, and so I, I suppose that, you know, if we've made an agreement of that and concourse is the best we can do, but I just put it out there that I would feel more comfortable if it was the Montrose Mamawee Concourse.
Councillor Tarrant?
Just a note on that. So first of all, it, there was never any official name on it. I mean, we knew, we knew it as the Greenway for a while, as the concourse, it was just a generic, and so this is, you know, starting from scratch. I think it's important to note that the cultural, the Montrose Cultural Center still remains the Montrose Cultural Center. There's no change there, and I think people will still refer to the site as the Montrose Site. It's, you know, that's obviously huge importance in our community, and I don't think it takes away from that significance. I think it just adds to the, the cultural aspect of, of the entire site.
Thanks councillor Tarrant. Councillor Logan?
Yeah, I'd just like to support councillor Rice on the question of the naming and the importance of the name Montrose, which is already a tremendously important one, both in history and in the present. I, I'm satisfied with the way that this has been handled, but I would hope that future councils would look forward to other opportunities where the, the name Montrose could be used, because I think it is really worth it.
Thanks very much councillor Logan. Any, anyone else? I see councillor O'Toole on the queue.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I did have some concerns at the last time this was brought up, and my concerns have been relieved. I think this is a good compromise to the name. I, and I still will call it the Montrose Area. I think that most Grand Prairie citizens will. This is just a segment of that area, which is going to be called Mamawee Concourse. So, yeah, you got my vote.
Thanks for your comments councillor O'Toole. I'll just say, I would encourage all council members to support the motion. Councillor Tarrant, you know, highlighted the fact that this actually doesn't change the recognition of Montrose in, on the site. In fact, the, you know, the largest facility on the site is called the Montrose Cultural Center. We also have a Montrose School, Ecol Montrose, which if you want to really talk about mashing things up, we have a Francophone school recognizing a city or a community in Scotland. But, so Montrose absolutely isn't going anywhere in our community. What this renaming does, what this, giving this space a name does do, is provides an opportunity for us to recognize, especially in Canada's one hundred and fiftieth year, that well before the establishment of Canada, and well before the arrival of any European settlers, there were people that lived on these lands. And a simple act of recognizing that culture through their language by, by giving it some standing via a place name is, I think, a good start along the path of reconciliation, and demonstrating that it is possible for indigenous cultures to be recognized in an urban context. One thing I think we've done well in Grand Prairie in the past is recognize indigenous cultures' connection to, to natural spaces and park spaces, Musquesee Park being an example, and Muscatay Park to the north end being another example. But I think as we go forward, if we truly want to ensure that indigenous people have a place in the future of our city and the future of our country, we need to recognize their culture in modern urban contexts, not just in places where there are streams and plains and trees. They need to be places where there is hard, hard surface infrastructure, if we want to, to ensure that they are fully part of our communities. For me, I would have been more comfortable, comfortable with Mamawee Pia, but I appreciate, I appreciate the dialogue that happened around the name, and I appreciate the, the generosity and kindness that were shown by the indigenous community with respect to the dialogue. One learning that has come from, from me that I think future council will have to think about is that Grand Prairie was not just home to Cree, was, you know, was not only people who spoke Cree in this region. There were substantial number of people who also spoke Beaver language, and council may at some point in the future want to consider how we begin to acknowledge that and recognize that in our community. But we can't do everything at once, and so I think that this is a good first step along, along a good path. Is there any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Councillor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. We'll move on to the second motion here. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C thirteen sixty-four, being the City of Grand Prairie Library Board bylaw.
Thanks very much councillor Tarrant. So as, as typical, we'll have a vote on first reading, and then we'll have some introduction and context. Please vote on first reading. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Tarrant?
Thank you. So this is just a minor bylaw change. You can take a look in the notes there. Just changing some of the, just recognizing the committee structure that had been existing informally, and just making sure that it was codified in the, in the bylaw.
Thanks councillor Tarrant. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just also would add to councillor Tarrant's comment that the new section is skills, abilities, and experience, and that was some input from the library board, and was supported by our board. And I'll just, will, will inform the, the evaluation matrix that we'll use when we receive public member applications for our board.
Thanks very much councillor Radburn. Councillor Tarrant, did you make the motion for second reading?
No, I would move that, that motion.
Thanks very much councillor Tarrant. Any discussion or debate on second reading of the amendments to the Grand Prairie Library Board bylaw? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Tarrant? Councillor McLean? Sure, sure. So councillor McLean's requested a revote as he inadvertently hit the wrong button. So we will, I'll call for a revote on second reading of the Grand Prairie Library Board bylaw. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Tarrant?
I would move that we have third reading.
Thanks very much councillor Tarrant. Some motion to have third and final reading here tonight. I heard it earlier, in order for this to happen, we must have a unanimous vote. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Tarrant?
I will move that we give third reading to bylaw C thirteen sixty-four.
Thanks very much councillor Tarrant. Any discussion or debate? Again, seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Councillor Tarrant, you had one more piece of business.
The final motion would be that council award T dash twenty-four dash four thirty-two dash seventeen, the two thousand seventeen playground replacement program to Park and Play Design Company Limited for design option number two in the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and thirty cents exclusive of GST as the highest evaluated proponent meeting city specifications. Speaking to this, it's the park that's founded at Macklinfield in the Hillside area.
Any discussion or debate? Councillor Tarrant, if, if I can ask a question, I wasn't able to be at the committee meeting. Option two, what's the significant difference in option two? Does it have the disc swing? Or what was the, what's the significant difference between the options?
There was.
Just to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I know. There was additional playground features. I can't, I can't recall exact, the exact playground features. I don't know if anyone from administration recalls.
I, I seem to remember from the report that there was, one option had a disc swing, and one did not. And so was, was this the higher or lower price?
This was, I believe this was the highest one, yeah.
The highest one, so it would have.
It did include.
Yeah, within budget, but the highest one that would have more, more features. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Tarrant, anything else you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
No, I think those, those covered a lot of the big, big parts of the motion at the meeting.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Tarrant. Councillor Thieson, the community safety committee meeting from June twentieth.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the community safety committee meeting held Tuesday, June twentieth, two thousand seventeen, as presented.
Thanks very much councillor Thieson. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries unanimously.
I know, I was trying to go to my, my councilmate here, Kevin McLean, and voting no. But I know he won't vote no as we move down the list, because we do have a couple decisions to make from that committee meeting. The first is being an RFP on the downtown rehabilitation and streetscape program. And I would move that council allocate four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from within the approved budget to the engineering consultant contract RFP dash forty-two dash five-five-two dash fifteen, for a new total contract price of one million four hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and four dollars excluding GST, previously awarded to ISL Engineering and Land Services for phase one and two for the downtown rehabilitation and streetscape project. Just a little context to, to this one, I know there's been times throughout the year that we've added a little bit in engineering and construction supervision costs on different road projects. This one is based off of the Morrison Herschfield Report for phases one and two, that estimated that we would need a hundred and twenty days to complete the project. Last year, due to inclement weather, we had a hundred days of construction work. But that went against Wapiti Gravels winning bid, which stated that they would need two hundred and sixty-seven days to do the total work of phases one and two, which is well above and beyond what the consultants had said that it would take. So this is just to add on to the extra site days of supervision. Currently, City of Grand Prairie staff, we do not have the capability to do a full supervision of the project, so that's why we retained this out. And this still falls underneath our budget, which was allocated for the downtown rehabilitation phases one and two.
Thanks very much councillor Thieson. Any discussion or debate? Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I speak to a few of these when it comes to engineering, ISL. It seems like it's just, we'll give you a price, and we'll go from consultants, and we'll just add more. This is one-third more. So director Asher, I know it's downtown, it was raining, it was delayed when we first started the phase one. This is a big, big jump for engineering. Are we learning anything from this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The original number, a hundred and twenty days, was based on the Morrison Herschfield concept plan. Council was involved at that time, at that time. And based on the best information known at that time, this was the estimate that they, the consultant used. So engineering used this number on the original RFP as a fixed number in order to use the same criteria for all bidders. But there is a clause on the RFP stating that the contractor, in this case, Wapiti, will set the final site days, because they're going to build the pipes and the roads in the ground. The design and the construction supervision will be finally adjusted to what the contractor, in this case, Wapiti, will tell us. So we received the accelerated schedule in April. After some negotiations, this is the, the final schedule. So they are estimating a hundred and sixty-seven days to complete the project. And according to the original terms of the RFP, we're now adjusting the construction supervision component for ISL in order to match what the contractor, Wapiti, is, is scheduling for site construction. So this is the explanation on why we use a hundred and twenty days, based on the best information available at that time, back in two thousand and fifteen, based on Morrison Herschfield Report. Thank you.
My final question, Mayor Given. We know there's going to be a three and four stage with design and looking into, so we'll take what happened here into those stages?
I think I can answer that one, councillor McLean. I think I can answer that one, Counsel McLean. Now, when Director Galante asserted that that was the best known information that we had at the time, you know, and most of the city knows that when we opened up the roads, we found old pipes, we found old lines, we found connections, things that were, could have been a hazard to the workers. So obviously, they had to work around the uncertainty of the roads. Currently, the ISL contract for construction supervision and engineering is set for 320 days, and that was included in the price. So I think we learned ahead of the game on how that's actually going to work into the next contract, so.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Thieson. Counsel Tarrant.
Thank you. Just wondering where this brings us in the context of the overall downtown budget.
Director Galante.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the allocation requested to council tonight, if it's approved, there's still $2.2 million remaining as part of the approved budget.
Thank you.
Thanks, Director Galante. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Thieson.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm really, I'm really happy to be bringing this one up. I would move that council approve the expanding mandatory helmet requirements resolution for submit, submission to the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association as presented. Now, this is an initiative that was brought up by my colleague, Counselor McLean, at a Community Safety Committee meeting. And basically, just to set all the requirements for helmets for kids 18 and under to make sure and ensure that in every community across the province that they're all wearing helmets. And that's inline skates, that's scooters, that's bikes, skateboards. I would all fall under the same helmet requirements for bicyclists. It's a big hard move by my, my council and friend and one that I urge all over council to approve, as this needs to go through to the AUMA submissions committee so that it can be reviewed and then brought up at the next AUMA convention after the next election.
Thanks, Counsel Thieson. Counsel McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just to speak to this is that we've had a couple skateboards over my two terms and I'm always for voting for children on different activities, but I was never for it because I'd go around there, if you had a bike on the skateboard, you have to wear a helmet. But on the skateboard, a lot of the children weren't. But I'm glad how administration actually took this back and said scooters and added to it because that's an awful lot around our area and kids are getting hurt on scooters. And, and with the, with the, what do you call it, the skates, line skating. And so I'm really glad the work the administration did by taking this back. We, usually administration takes it back, has a look at it, comes back, and they did a lot of good work here.
Thanks, Counsel McLean. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thieson.
Sorry, I'm a bit in shock. I'll have a discussion later on. No, I just would like to touch on one final thing that was discussed at committee, Safe Growth Matching Grant. We handed out, just going to get to the final total here, $13,718.64 plus about $960. There was one thing on the, on the Safe Growth Matching Grant applications from the Mount view Neighborhood Association that was presented to committee for committee to make the final decision. That was on putting wraps around garbage and recycling cans that were getting vandalized around the neighborhood as a vandalism crime deterrent. Committee unanimously voted that through. And on a side note, it was really nice to see our approvals come through with minimal cameras on the exterior of businesses. It seemed like we were riding a trend there, and I was concerned that that's what this grant was going to turn into, is a video surveillance grant. And judging by the participants who have submitted, and that is obviously not the case. And it looks like we're moving into other ways to make our community a safer place. So, thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Thieson. We'll move on to the Corporate Services Committee meeting. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, June 20th, 2017 as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Any errors or omissions or corrections we need to make to that set of minutes? Counsel Radburn thinks they're okay, they're probably perfect. Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Counsel Radburn. That was a teacher joke.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council approve the Alberta Capital Finance Authority Access for Housing Authorities Resolution for Submission to the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association as presented. So just in speaking to this, before we open it up, I'm going to read the Therefore Be It Resolved because that's the essence. There's lots of contexts, wherashes, but the, the Therefore Be It Resolved, that the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association lobby the government of Alberta to allow housing foundations, authorities, and other similar entities having requisitioning power to directly borrow from the Alberta Capital Finance Authority. In speaking to this, this has been long been advocated for by the Grand Spirit Foundation. And so this is, I guess, putting us in somewhat of a leadership role in terms of advocating for it again. Really what it means is then the Grand Spirit Foundation has requisitioning power. So when they build a capital project, they will get a better borrowing rate. And the benefit to municipalities are that there will be less need for them to requisition monies from the, our partner municipalities. So I think we'll be working with AUMA in terms of how the resolution ultimately looks, but I do think that we have an interest from Sexmouth, I believe, as well. And so I would hope that, encourage council to support this motion.
Thanks, Counsel Evern. Counsel Tarrant.
Mayor Given, just a couple questions on this. So right now, do housing authorities have the ability to requisition through municipalities? Is that currently the practice? So this would, if it went through, it would say they could directly go without having? And by housing authorities, those are established under provincial legislation, right? Grand Spirit and what it's referring to?
Yes.
Radburn, do you want to touch on that?
Thank you.
That's why we put in the having requisitioning power to kind of limit the number of housing authorities that would qualify.
Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Radburn, anything else?
Yes, we had one other agenda item. We received the interim report from Electoral Boundaries Commission. And so we've asked administration for some more information in terms of numbers. There's two motions you'll note in the, in the minutes, where we've asked David in this instance, instance, to bring back some information. And it will come to committee next week. And ultimately, committee, they'll make a recommendation to council on the 10th because the, the last, the meeting locally to host further submissions is the 17th, I believe. So I can give the timeframe so we can have a discussion again at committee, bring it to council here on the 10th, and then decide if we want to suggest changes to particularly the one constituency that has urban and rural population. We're not contemplating touching fully urban constituency at this time, but I'd be pleased if colleagues want to come to our committee meeting. Pleased to have you there to join the discussion. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Evern. I think that handles all of our committee business. We have no items of correspondence. With respect to delegations, I think the municipal government day youth art contest business has been concluded. I don't think there's anything following up from that, unless Counsel O'Toole, you think there is?
Given, I think we got all the little people happy today with all the prizes given out that were donated by general businesses in the community. But I will have a roundtable on municipal government day when it comes up.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. We were missing one delegation that let us know. The other one, though, Mr. Tipper, with respect to opening a medical cannabis dispensary, we should probably have a resolution or a motion accepting that presentation for information. Counsel Thieson.
I would make that motion.
Yeah, thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And I think the delegation with respect to the York, Jermaine Park RFP is, that was handled, of course. And I think that handles all of our delegation business. And so with no notice of motion, that would take us into council member reports. And the first one on our list, alphabetically speaking, is Disabled Transportation Society. Counselor Radburn.
And just quick, just two things from our June 22nd board meeting. We are one of the partners in the KMSC Law Golf Tournament, and we have applied for a CIP grant of $75,000 for, to support our will-call bus operations, which is a kind of a special bus that can, can move more flexibly to address immediate requests.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. The next up was Grand Prairie Airport Commission, Counselor Rice. I think you're going to do that update for us.
Just to let council know that passenger movements were up 6.9% in April of this year over April of 2016. And in May, they were up 5.5% over May of 2016. April was the first upward trend since August of 2015. So we're seeing some, some rather impressive numbers. The main parking lot rehabilitation is underway with the first of three phases complete, and this project's completion is scheduled for September 15th, 2017.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Was just thinking that's probably a leading indicator with respect to our economic activity in the region, so that's certainly good to see, that more people using the airport. The next up was Grand Prairie Library Board. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. And just a few highlights from our June 13th board meeting. We looked at the HR policies, the package of policies, because of our new management software programs, we made some changes there. We looked at the rules of conduct and the collections management, so those are the policies dealt with. We also did, as I mentioned earlier, we did review the board competencies matrix and bylaw that we, that we, council, thank you very much, supported. We're doing a small children's department renovation to make it more functional. And, and maybe most importantly, a plan of service discussion is set for September 12th. And the plan of service is one of the key works of the library board, and so I look forward to that. We're in with some help. We'll be gathering information for our deliberations on September 12th. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Next up, we had the Grand Spirit Foundation. Counsel Rice.
I attended a Grand Spirit meeting in the New Lakeview facility, and that facility is now open for tours. And I encourage all of you to take advantage and go tour that facility. You will be extremely proud. It's a beautiful facility, adding another 154 units to our region. So again, it's open for tours now, just prior to move in, so I encourage you to tour that facility. It has some two-bedroom units, which is unique in our area, so lots of, lots of neat pluses out there.
That's great. Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. And finally, with the last report of the night, South Beach Regional Archives Society, Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just to report on this, the last few meetings, I've been out of town or the city for on city business, so I'm glad to go to this meeting. It was Mary Nutting's executive director's last meeting, so to be there with her last meeting, it was really good. And a couple other things we talked about was, some of the staff were talking about when the workings go back and forth, that they may only need 500 square feet for the next 10, 15 years. Well, they don't agree with that, but there was a lot of cooperation in the meeting of about, it's called regional, and the city's put up over $800,000 not long ago. And there was a couple councillors from the county of Grand Prairie, the MDA, Greenview, and Spirit River wasn't there, but there, there's a possibility of a cooperation coming here. I don't know if it's gonna, what's gonna happen, like until they bring to their budgets and the rest of council knows about this, but it seemed like it was a really, really good meeting of moving forward. But basically, if they're to get some more square footage, we would need some cooperation from our surrounding partners. And I think there's a very positive mood here. So we don't know how it's going to prevail, but I hope it does for them so that, because when they were speaking at the meeting, they started in the early 90s and they had 200 square feet, and today they have about 2,000 square feet. And working with staff and that, they're saying they only need 500 more square feet over the next 10, 15 years. And they're saying, we don't think that's true. So with building a new building, I think there's great opportunities coming with maybe partnership here, and we'll see where it leads. Thank you.
Thanks for the update, Counsel McLean. So we'll carry on into council member reports, and we'll start with Counsel Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Well, I'm sure council's aware, it was a very busy couple weeks, I think about a dozen events I attended myself, but I'll just touch on three here tonight to keep things short. One of the first ones was the Highland Park Neighborhood Association AGM. Great, great attendance, some great buy-in there. It was very encouraging to see some, some great ideas come forward and some concerns addressed, and I'm looking forward to see the Neighborhood Association bring them forward for us to see. I attended the Canadian Home Builders Association, the local chapter here, and Developers' UDI group. They had a really interesting conversation they're having province-wide right now about uniting and becoming one, and that will have some big implications, I think, for city councils of the future if they do decide to unite in terms of, you know, they're quite a regular partner with us and, and how we interact with them. So that'll be interesting to follow and watch, see whether they locally will join and whether on a provincial level that they will join us as well. The final one I will mention was I attended the Grand Prairie Regional Recreation Committee. We had out in Sexmouth. It was really, it was one, it was the first meeting where we actually got to, you know, sort of sit down and work some of the nuts and bolts out in terms of the terms of reference and how the committee's going to function. And it was really good. We had some really good conversations, you know, preliminary stuff, but it's, I think, going to be setting some of the principles for how the committee is run, you know, in terms of how, how the administration of the committee is handled and how it's funded. And I think that, you know, we're making some good decisions that will really influence the, the future of this committee.
Thanks very much, Counsel Tarrant. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just very quickly, identify three events as well. I just want to, I was able to bring congratulations and greetings on behalf of council to the Cultural Immigration Academy. I think there's, we're getting up to 10 or so there, and I've been very fortunate to be able to come to, I think, all but one of them. And so they, they continue to really provide support for newcomers and, and different people of different cultures who have been here for a while, too. So again, very successful and appreciate my colleagues, Counsel Thieson and McLean, for joining me. Also, I was very proud to, to read the proclamation at the, on Aboriginal Day, their Bannock and Burger Barbecue. So that was the start, that was the day, but also started, as council's well aware, of a few days of, of activities that many of us participate in as well. And finally, I just, I went to the Youth Council Year and Dinner. I just wanted to, students are near and dear to my heart, of course, but there's some very talented young people that we have being part of our Youth Council. And they shared some of the leadership opportunities that they had received through the City of Grand Prairie, so I'm proud of, of the city being able to support these youth and their development. But I think it just reminds us that the leaders of tomorrow are not waiting, they'll be here very, very soon. And I've shared with Counsel Thieson, and we can talk in a different forum, I think there's a couple things we can do to connect that Youth Council to our council a little bit better, but that's for another day. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Evern. Counsel O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. We've done a lot of things in the last three weeks that I can, I'll highlight a couple. On June 10th, I attended both the Army Cadet and the Air Cadet Final Inspections at Revolution Police and also the Armories. On the Army Cadet Final Inspection. Uh, on the, uh, Army Cadet Final Inspection, uh, Clarissa Stoffelson was brought an award that represents, she is the top cadet in all of Alberta, and, uh, got to be recognized by the provincial board, and, uh, made, made her day and made my day. I, I, uh, been watching her go through the cadets program, and she's the, uh, the model child, you might say. So, she's gonna be a leader in this, uh, world in a very short time. Uh, today, I attended the Goodwill Business, uh, um, and Power of Work in Grand Prairie. I was joined by some colleagues, uh, Radburn and Thiessen and McLean and Mr. Mayor Given yourself. And it was just to see how we can put the people that have, uh, social issues, uh, mental issues, and, uh, put them to work and how this, uh, business is trying to survive by, uh, taking donations and, uh, making sure that they're put out and tested in quality clothes and sold. Uh, but, uh, the power of work is one that, uh, that there are people that do actually have social issues that can't necessarily get out and, uh, and go out after they get out of school to get a regular job. And this is sort of the, the key point in their life, where they can get some training, understanding cash, understanding, uh, um, appearance, understanding having to be on, work on time. And, uh, there's a great training, uh, uh, program that they offer. And, uh, it was great to see this, uh, is successful in Grand Prairie. The program itself has been going on for over 60 years in the province of Alberta, so... And, uh, I just wanna touch up a little bit here. I'm on the, uh, the, uh, the board, we're, uh, what's the name of it now? Grand Prairie, what we loan money? Community Futures. Man, I'm having a bad day here. But Community Futures is having a program, uh, Spark Incubator, uh, ribbon cutting. It's gonna be held on Friday, June 20th, uh, June 30th. I won't be there. I'm doing some stuff for the city that day, uh, than this, but I think there's gonna be ribbon cutting, and I'm pretty sure the mayor will be there. So, those of you that, uh, are interested in the Spark Incu, Spark Business Incubator, the city has, uh, put their foot forward and, uh, really helped out this program. So, if you can make it, that'd be a great thing. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Councilor Rice?
Leave, uh, Minister Mark McQuaid Boyd is going to be there, uh, as well. So it's obviously, uh, fairly important ribbon cutting.
Councilor Rice, I think it's your turn, actually.
Oh, okay.
Roundtable.
Um, I attended the AUMA Mayor's Caucus, uh, in Okatoks. Um, it was rather, uh, quite interesting to see the number of people who were eager to meet our new city manager or to renew their, uh, relationship with him, uh, after a few years. So, uh, I think it went extremely well. Um, of course, the mayor was missed. Um, I also attended the Legion's, uh, 90th Anniversary Celebration and Barbecue. Um, as Councilor Tarrant mentioned, it was a frantically busy couple of weeks. Uh, uh, but I was pleased to, uh, attend those activities.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Um, I'm gonna, guess, follow the, the crowd and pick three, 'cause it was busy. Um, and then these haven't been mentioned yet. Uh, one thing I, I wanted to mention today, uh, has got to be part of a, a very special occasion where, uh, Habitat for Humanity was able to, uh, turn over their keys to a, a proud new homeowner, a single mom with two kids. Uh, you could tell how much it, it meant to her. Uh, interesting side note is that, uh, the Catholic School Board had fundraised over $100,000 for various housing projects around the city and the province. Uh, $35,000 of that actually went to this house. Uh, and when a grade three student held the keys, standing beside the principal, and gave it over to the mom, uh, I'm, there wasn't a dry eye in the house. Um, I knew it was okay that I was crying, 'cause I looked across the room, and Councilor Tarrant was, uh, trying to fight the tears as well, so, uh, it was really good. But I was also joined for that moment, uh, with, uh, the councillors, Radburn, O'Toole, Mayor Given, and Councilor Clayton as well. Uh, very proud to be a part of that, and seeing someone get their, their first home is a very touching moment. Speaking of touching moments, I won't mention the Pride Party in White. There's lots of touching there. But it was a great event. It was an amazing event. I danced the night away with the ladies in the back, and, uh, I won't embarrass you and say that I was your date, but I sort of clung around them all night, and, uh, we had a good time. Uh, and congratulations to the organizing committee, 'cause, uh, for year two, it seems to be really kicking off, uh, in our community. Uh, there's a lot more tolerance and acceptance, and, uh, definitely a lot of love in the room. So, uh, all the organizers there should be really proud of, uh, another weekend worth of events. Uh, put on well this weekend, year, uh, two in a row. Um, and finally, um, I'd like to mention Aboriginal Days, 'cause I had the opportunity to, uh, to give greetings on behalf of the mayor and, uh, city council. I was joined in attendance that day by councillors Clayton and Tarrant. Uh, and, uh, I was also there, uh, to, uh, present, uh, one of the seven Sacred Teachings awards to one of the seven recipients, and mine was on respect, which is questionable whether or not I deserve to give that one away, but, uh, I think I'm respectable enough when my hair is combed. Um, but it was another glorious day, a great celebration. And, uh, when I was giving my greetings, I made mention of the powwow that I was at the day before and all the great work that was put in by the organizing committee and the vision by Walter White, who had put it all together, and how blessed it was. And I kept talking, and the crowd actually drowned me out. It was, uh, really kind of cool. I had to stop and say, "Yeah, yeah, okay." So that, that was really, really good, 'cause it was appreciated. Because going to Aboriginal Days, you're used to seeing crowds of 1,000-plus people that are coming and going throughout the day. For the first ever powwow in like 25 years in the city of Grand Prairie and Legion Field, when there's lots of stuff going on, on the same day, the Legion's 90th, the Pride Parties, the Carnival and all that stuff, they still turned out 600-plus and powwowed right until about midnight, uh, out there in Legion Field. And, uh, I know I was only able to be there for about three hours. I walked in with a circle of delegates, councillors McLean, uh, Mayor Given, um, no, no, Councilor Clayton was there as well. Yeah, she was, she was my date for that walk-through. But when I, uh, when I left the powwow, 'cause they smudged the whole circle area and they blessed the area, and it's, it's, it was really cool. And I drove away, and I realized how hot it was in my car. I was like, "Oh my God, this is so hot in here. I should have my windows rolled down." So I rolled the windows down, a big gust of wind came in and blew into my car, and I could smell smudge smoke. So either it was on me and the wind was just telling me how it was, uh, and, or it was purveying throughout the whole city of Grand Prairie, which I thought was really awesome. I talked with, uh, local elder Angie Creer, and she said, "If you could smell the smoke that far away, you are blessed." So thank you for that, Angie, and, uh, thank you for our glorious Aboriginal Day celebration and to the great, busy two weeks that we've all had. It was awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Thiessen. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll just correct, uh, Councilor Thiessen. I was at the Native Counselling Service Aboriginal Day. I was just one of the first ones there, sitting under the shade and, and relaxing, and it, and then, smart way to go, 'cause it was a warm day and had a great turnout. I'll speak to a couple of events. Uh, one, June 14th, as, uh, Councilor Evern spoke to. I, I, this is the second year I brought my daughters, Kendra and Cara, to the event, because I wanna know, I want them to be going to the events and see why our city is growing from immigration and people from around the world. That's why we are progressing the way we are. Uh, a couple of other events, uh, I'll speak to as well is the Grand Prairie Legion 90th Pancake, Pride Family Carnival, and the, the powwow, Grand Prairie powwow. Thank Walter for doing an incredible job. And I'm speaking to these three really quick, because my wife Tina, my daughter Kendra and Cara came as well. Uh, a lot of these events were family events and great events for recognition. There's a lot of events I don't go, I can't bring my children. That's the reason why, 'cause certain weekends I'm off, I wanna be go with my children. And the other one I'll speak to was brought up by Councilor O'Toole, was a tour of Goodwill Industries' facility. I do not know, I have friends that actually, uh, went through the work process there, but I don't know about the power of work as much as I did today. And it's something I'm gonna say right now, I think hiring people with disabilities, this looks like something the city should be involved in. I know we're doing Rotary three or five full-time, but they have such a schedule. I hope that we see more from Goodwill coming to the committee and seeing what they do in Edmonton and Calgary as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor McLean. Councilor Logan?
Thank you. Uh, just, uh, two items, both of which are sort of good items. I attended the Pursuit of Excellence, the most recent Pursuit of Excellence Committee. Very, um, really enjoyed that, uh, committee anyway, but I really enjoyed the talent that's sitting around the table in terms of the people that are making the decisions and the, uh, uh, disbursements that are made, uh, financially to, uh, people in the community. And, uh, very, very strong, it's the strongest, uh, uh, session I've seen, where, uh, just all good news. The other thing was, uh, just a day or two after that, I, uh, I'm not sure how many people know that, uh, uh, I had a heart attack, uh, back last fall. And, uh, uh, just a few days ago, I got, uh, a clean bill of health from a specialist. He certainly gave me a beating about it anyway, but, uh, things are looking quite well that way. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Logan, and, and certainly, uh, council's happy to hear that. Councilor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, I think pretty much everything on my list, uh, from the Aboriginal celebrations, pride celebrations, Legion anniversaries, uh, Tabeno celebrations have all been covered. The only thing on my list that, uh, I don't think anyone else was there, and correct me if I'm wrong, I attended the, uh, Chamber of Commerce Annual Golf Classic at Bear Creek Golf Course. It was, uh, another sold-out event. They, uh, it's great to see small business and big business alike get together and enjoy a day of, uh, sun and golf on, uh, on a local golf course. And it was, uh, it was a great event as always, so, thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. I will be brief and just touch on a couple of highlights. Uh, attended the Aquatera Shareholders' Meeting on, uh, Tuesday, the 20th. Um, I think we may have had a, uh, communication error. Uh, I'm not sure if my other council colleagues, uh, received a notification of that meeting, but, uh, council had seen the, uh, uh, rates previously. Um, I, uh, also really appreciated, uh, the youth council dinner, um, for two different sort of facets that, uh, haven't been touched on. Uh, first, uh, for the enthusiasm of our staff. Um, it's obvious that our staff that work with the youth council have a, have a very direct, personal connection with the youth that they've been mentoring, uh, and that connection is returned. It certainly flows both ways. Um, there was a lot of, uh, respect for our staff, and, and I just wanna acknowledge the fact that our staff do a great job. And I know that that is not the only example, uh, of our staff who develop a very, uh, directed, meaningful relationship with the people that they serve in the community. Uh, the other reason was, um, I, uh, uh, was, um, surprised, um, and impressed to see a father there who attended the meeting to ensure that word got out, um, that there is a parent support group, uh, for parents who, um, are, uh, for parents of transgender children. Uh, this father, uh, related a bit of his personal story, his family story, uh, and he wanted to ensure that other families in Grand Prairie knew that there was a parent support group, uh, for parents who are, uh, for parents of children who are, um, dealing, uh, with transgender issues. Uh, and so I would, uh, he related to us that, uh, if there are any parents out there that don't know where to turn, um, they, this group can be contacted through HIV North, um, and that he and his wife were on call, essentially. Um, so, appreciated seeing that that was available in our community. I think everybody covered our busy weekend of Legion 90th Anniversary, uh, the powwow and the party in white. Um, and, uh, I also wanted to, uh, reference the, uh, key exchange for Habitat for Humanity. Congratulations to the students in the Grand Prairie Catholic School District and all the community volunteers that make, um, Habitat for Humanity possible. Uh, one last thing, uh, if we didn't give it one more plug, we'd be remiss. Uh, everybody would be wondering why we wore t-shirts today instead of ties and suits. Uh, Municipal Government Day, uh, as we mentioned earlier, is this Wednesday, uh, down at Musca Sippee Park. Uh, activities run from, uh, I think about 3:00 PM on into the evening with a free Tim Hicks concert. Uh, would certainly encourage the community to attend, based on previous years where we go through so many hot dogs and hamburgers. I know they won't miss it, um, but we certainly wanna make sure that people, uh, get that opportunity to come down. And, you know, the, we've been doing Municipal Government Day for a long time. It was my first term on council when we started. And, uh, I just really appreciate the opportunity to shine a light on the role of local government in making Grand Prairie a great place to live. Um, you know, we've, we've, it's becoming a bigger and bigger party and celebration. I think people just enjoy the activities and getting out in the summer. Um, but it really is a chance to demonstrate, um, the fact that local government makes communities work. Um, and we have so many people in our organization that are working to serve their friends and neighbors and family, uh, through their day-to-day work. And for me, that's what Municipal Government Day is about. For many other people, it's about hot dogs and hamburgers, and that's okay, too. And we encourage everybody to come down and join us at, uh, Musca Sippee Park this Wednesday. Uh, with that, we'll call our meeting adjourned.